Okay, it's six thirty-three, I'll call this meeting order. And ask you all, if you'd mind, to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is an adjustment to the agenda.
For the members of the board, there is one adjustment to the agenda. Recommend that you amend the agenda by adding the following to item J for new business. It's discussion of the proposed city storm brain maintenance.
I make a motion to amend the agenda by adding the following to new business. I recommend everybody.
Second.
On favor? Close. Approval of minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of February twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, team board meeting as presented.
Second.
Discussion. On favor? Item E, communications and correspondence.
There were one communication that I received today, it was addressed to the board and to myself. For more of our teachers, especially thank you for approving a leave. I'll share that with the board this night. And I have one other communication that was sent to Mr. Markosian and myself that I'd like to share with the board during my report.
IMF is public participation. G, administrator board reports. First one of these on the agenda is student board member report. I'll bring that over to Hayden Sattler.
Okay. The NHS will be having a spring induction on April twelfth at six P M. The EHS Student Council National Honor Society hosted a blood drive on March seventh, and we donated twenty-three pints of blood from Elsworth High School students. This ended up saving up to sixty-nine lives. Student Council is putting on a winter carnival on the week of March twentieth, that's this week. It will conclude with the ER tour dance on the twenty-fourth this Friday, and surrounding schools will be in attendance. That's all.
Building administrator reports. Mr. Flipper here up first.
You have my report. I'd like to start by just communicating that Wednesday night from six o'clock, eight o'clock, we have our A three open house at Elfrid High School. It was just on the front last Wednesday, and so hopefully the community can come out and enjoy that night. I'd like to recognize two winter teams and send you the rules for some accomplishments. If I could, first have the girls swim team. Come on up. So first they won the kids sports championship banner for the state evening. They came in eleventh out of twenty-two teams in the state championship. Some individual performances, bronze medalists in the fifty freestyle was Ellie Clark, seventh place. The five hundred freestyle was Caitlin McPherson, came in seventh place. The hundred backstroke Ellie Clark with fifth place, which is a team record. And the four hundred three relay, eighth place was Marion Nelson, Caitlin McPherson, Arianna Peterson, and Ellie Clark. Consolation final ribbons. The two hundred medley relay, ninth place, Leah Stevens, Ellie Clark, Caitlin McPherson, and Marion Nelson. The five hundred freestyle, Marion Nelson, thirteenth place. The two hundred three relay, in fourteenth place, Taylor Richardson, Kristen Mulzy, Kiana Maddox, Wilbur, and Katie Hammer. So those are the ones that participated in the state championship, and a lot of them are young and coming back next year. The boys team also won the kids sports championship banner in the state championship. They were the state runner-up out of twenty-one teams. The swimmer, the meet was Camden Holmes. Gold medalist in first place, two hundred freestyle was Camden Holmes, one hundred freestyle Camden Holmes. And the five hundred freestyle Sam Alvarado. And silver medal in second place, one hundred butterfly Richie Matthews, one hundred backstroke Hayden Sattler. Bronze medalist in the two hundred medley relay in fifth place, Sam Pelletier, Hayden Sattler, Becky Markosian, and Carter Frank. Okay, I'd like to just quickly add that Coach Jim couldn't be here tonight. He had heart surgery right after the girls state championship, so he might be watching online or just may not be here tonight. But also, as a note too, this is our sports championship banner this year. We're running the fall golf and football, so that's kind of a great honor so far. Hopefully we keep it going in the spring for our festival. Okay, we have two wrestlers. Come on up. Looking for isn't here, but I'll talk about his accomplishments for the year. For the season, he was thirty-six in five, and he's a sophomore. His career is seventy-one in thirteen. He was the regional champion, second at states, and fourth in the all-states. Peyton Cole, who's a junior, for the season, he had forty-six wins and two losses. His career so far is one hundred and seventeen wins and sixteen losses, which is a junior record for career wins at Elfrid High School. He's a team captain, three-time state champion, two-time all-state champion, and finished fourth in New England this year. And senior Trent Biedman, this is his incredible year. So for the season, he was forty-nine and two. Career, one hundred and fifty wins to nine losses, which is a career win record at Elfrid High School. He's a two-time captain, three-time state champion, and third in New England this year in two thousand seventeen. These guys line our team, and for our team results, we are third at regionals, second at states, eighteenth out of New England, second post-state of Maine, and these two are the first wrestlers to ever place in New England.
Any questions? Next up, Mr. Newitt.
Just to be here, I want to introduce the effort this will close the way that we do so well. But we did have four students participating in the Skills USA competition for the first time ever, the end of the competition. Here the four, the first, second, and third, which is part of our, and not here to see the medal, so that's going to be saved for a few more minutes coming up. Really kind of special for us to be wrestling here at this time. This week in Montefiore for kids, we started N E A testing. And then we'll continue for the next couple of weeks, grade eight, grade five, we're getting that done this week, grade seven next week, and grade six the week after. The first time in many, many years we've been hosting the air training, we've been appropriated that from the air training. On March thirty-first is the ceremony starts at eight-thirty, ready to cafeteria, there'll be a lot of police here from the local area in support of that effort. Co-curricular news, you don't see him here, but we also had state champions in the world of middle school, cheerleaders once again, I believe this is the eighth consecutive year that they were state champions, which is attributed to Jamie Stackmore, the program that she builds and that high to the middle school. Jasmine and Show Choir received one ratings at their regional competition. They'll now compete in the state competition at the end of this month. Our wrestling team went to regional competitions this weekend, we have a regional champion in Landon St. Peter, won it all, will go on to the state championship this coming weekend. And our chess club competed in the novice division at the state tournament this past weekend, both the fifth and sixth graders and the seventh and eighth squads finished in second. The parent news, we'll be getting provision slips home this week for our second trimester award trip. This is based on the habits of work accomplishment, those kids rated as having met the standard or exceeding the standard in our three goal areas of the gold bowling in Eastwood Lanes. The teachers have challenged them, so I hope the kids will take them up on that challenge. It'll be a fun time to be gold. And our second trimester ended this past Friday, we're going to have to go home and come back.
Thanks, Danny.
Hi, Amy Peterson-Rooper, K four principal. We had our kindergarten registration for two days. We had forty-seven children, and we have a makeup day that's coming up on April seventh, and we already have, this report, it says twelve, but we already have nineteen children signed up to come to that makeup day. So we are ahead of the number of children we had in kindergarten last year. Dr. Seuss Day happened on March second, it was a lot of fun. I'd like to thank the EHS kids who came over, really we couldn't do it without them, and they have a lot of fun too, I believe. And I also want to thank Jamie Reed for organizing that, and all the specialists, they really give up their time, and it takes the night before to set it up, and we really enjoyed it. Dave Nowood once again did the jump for heart. We, I thought it was twenty-seven hundred dollars that he raised for the Heart Association, but it was closer to twenty-eight. So the second, third, and fourth grade students really did a nice job pledging for that. Our main college circle application is due on Friday. That is where children, Bob Stewart came from the main circle, and he talked to the kids about aspirations and how college is one way to get you there. Then children fill out this college essay and application, and if they are selected, a hundred dollars goes into a scholarship. And that scholarship doesn't necessarily have to be waited to use for college, some children have used it for a summer camp. So if they are interested in being an engineer and they found a robotics camp, they can draw out that money and go to that camp. So it is a great way for your kids to, you know, make camp money, and it's also a great way to talk about what you want to be when you grow up. Some of us know it, and some of us don't. February reading challenge, we broke fifty percent. We led Brenda Thomas, they are, the Masons are giving us fight for a girl and a boy at each grade level. And so this month, we had two hundred and thirty-eight children who read out of our four hundred and sixty, so that's good. The next one is coming in April, it's the last one, so if you haven't done one, now's the time. We have beautiful first and second grade concerts right after each other, one on Wednesday, one on Thursday last week because of all the snow days. They were beautiful, and we have a kindergarten concert coming up this Thursday evening, if anybody would like to join us. Starts at six o'clock. Our art, we used to have an art exhibit at the same time as our concerts, but what we're doing is we're going to have a K four art show during the P T F picnic at the end of the school year. And the halls will be filled with student art. But she did get some students' artwork to the main mall and for their exhibit, and there were students who were mentioned. They were Oliver Wood, Gibson Wood, Ridley Green, and work selected to be in an exhibition belonged to Bo Barrett. We want to congratulate every student who put their work there, it's beautiful. If you even had a chance to go, I think this was the last weekend that was coming, this coming weekend, and that was Randy Welch that did that. We also would like to thank the U Main Theater Group, they came and did James and the Giant Peach for pre-K four, it was a beautiful production. Many of the fourth graders read the book beforehand, and so they were able to really talk about oral presentation versus the book, and it was a lot of fun. And thank you to the P T F, we had African dance, and the K through eight gymnasium was rocking, it was a lot of fun. Any questions? Thank you.
Good evening, Amy Bowles, Hancock County Technical Center. As of tonight, our recruitment visits are done across Hancock County, and this week actually interested sophomores are visiting H C T C. Today, we had about half the high schools came, and tomorrow the other half of the high schools will be doing their sophomore visits. Applications are due to guidance counselors by Friday, April twenty-fourth, and that gives them a chance to put everything together to send to me by Friday, March thirty-first. Bridge year applications are also due Friday, March thirty-first. And just a new notice that's gone out, parents that weren't able to attend the Bridge Parent Night last week, we are having another one this Thursday night at six o'clock at H C T C for any interested students applying to Bridge Year whose parents would like to ask questions, we'll have a parent night at H C T C. We also hosted last week the entire eighth grade class at Blue Hill Consolidated School. They came for several hours, spent time in every program, and heard about the programs we have to offer. Mr. Flipper also came over and spoke to the students about Bridge Year, so that they would know as they start registering classes for classes at their various high schools, just talk to guidance counselors about Bridge Year to help set their classes up for freshman and sophomore year. I also will give you, at the end of my report, our spring middle school skills camp, signups have begun, it's Saturday, April eighth, and we have some really new exciting program descriptions, because we have some kids now that have come for every single one we offer. So we're trying to diversify what each program does so that kids get new experiences each time they come. Without further ado, if my high school students could start to line up all of them. So as you know, we once again had another very successful trip to Skills USA, the state career and technical education competition for the state of Maine. We have a bunch. We are very, very proud. We took the largest group from the state of Maine, when you added our staff, our middle school students, and our high schoolers. So several of them are here this evening. I've asked them to, and I'll remind them, say their name, what program they're in, what competition they competed in, and what medal or state office they earned. Is that what you started?
Ms. Gallo, I'm here with the culinary arts, I'm from summer and I got bronze.
I'm Joseph Saunders, I'm from Bushfield High School, I'm culinary arts, I'm a woman has a education process, I'm a gold.
I'm Britt, I'm from Elsworth High School, I completed an extern degree in speaking and I got bronze.
My name's Eleanor, I'm from Deer Isle, I'm a occupation and got silver.
I'm Carol, I'm from Leo, I'm a freshman in Elfrid High School, I got CSI.
Hi, Felicity from the College Davis Academy.
I'm Duncan Kane, I go, I do criminal justice, I go to Deer Isle High School, I did the criminal justice competition, I got silver.
I'm John Nowood, I finished in the C S I team for law enforcement, I got M D I and we finished bronze.
I did power engine technology, I go down to the high school and I placed bronze.
I'm Natalie Clay, I'm in the health occupations program, and I'm in career path with, and health services, and we got gold.
All right, I'm Katie O'Shea, I'm in the health occupations program, I go to M D I. I, I, I knew I was going to be shot. I did the career badge ways, health services, and we got gold.
I'm Abby Welch, I'm in health occupations, I competed in health knowledge pool, and I placed in gold, and I go to Eldridge High School.
I'm Sierra Sargent, I go to Eldridge High School, and I was in health knowledge pool, and our team got gold.
So our gold medalists are now eligible to attend the national competition in Louisville, Kentucky at the end of June. Will be coming to you in April with a formal request to approve their trip to nationals. By then, we'll have all of the information for the travel. So congratulations to our high school kids. But I also now would like to bring up three of my middle school competitors. So as Mr. Newitt said, Skills USA is really trying to include middle school students in a career technical experience. And for the first time, there were two middle school competitions. There was a CO2 dragster racing competition and a job interview competition. These kids for job interview had to go in and pretend that they were in a reception this area, fill out a formal job application, and then meet with three strangers who were an interview panel for a job. They also had to present a resume and answer any questions that the potential employers had. That evening, they had the opportunity to be at the award ceremony and get their medals, but they were all very, very busy. So tonight, we have their medals, and they are going to be presented with them. So girls, part of the tradition of Skills USA is that when you get your medal, you also receive a state pin, and that state pin is for you to award to either a coach, a parent, an advisor, anybody that really helps you with your Skills USA experience. Okay? So without further ado, first, our bronze medalist in the state of Maine for middle school job interview was Noe Burman. Our silver medalist is Sarah Shay. And our gold medalist this year for job interview is Maddie Hennessy. Thank you, girls, congratulations. Congratulations to everyone.
Congratulations.
My report is hot off the press. Hello, everybody, I'm Annie Sargent, and I have the distinct pleasure of being the director of adult ed for the town of Elsworth. A few things to report on, we have a collaboration with literacy volunteers, and we just finished training, and we have about nine volunteers who are going to be working in our program. We're really excited to have them. In this particular prop, though it's not required to be a literacy volunteers, many of them have extensive teaching background. And so we're very thrilled to have them providing tutoring in a variety of different areas. I have their listed in the report here. Our office skills program, which I reported on earlier in the year, is underway. We have a small group, it's a pilot. We have four people, they range in age from twenty-one to the twenties to the sixties. It's a great group, and they're going to be teaching us a lot about how to run our program. And we're very lucky to have Allison Chum from Teaching That, who has a lot of great experience to offer. Our spring C and A program is going up fast, it's starting the third week in April. There's still a couple of slots left, so if you're interested, you want to give us a call right away, this next Tuesday, no, I'm sorry, tomorrow night, there's actually an orientation session, so if you're interested, you may want to go to that, which is at four o'clock at our office at the University College. We are thrilled to have a customer service workshop, which we're doing in collaboration with area businesses and with the Elsworth Chamber. And that's four consecutive Monday mornings starting this Wednesday from eight-thirty to ten. We actually are pretty much full, we probably could fit a couple more people in, so if you're interested in that workshop, you'll want to sign up. So we have people coming from Stanley Subaru, and Bangor Savings Bank, and Cadillac Mountain Sports, and if any businesses are interested in being on a panel for any of those sessions, please be in touch with us as well. Our high set computer, our high set testing is now computer-based. Special shout-out to everybody in the tech department, because I basically felt like I had a direct line to Ed Pierpont, thankfully. It was a very smooth start, though rocky in my insides because I was really stressed out about the process. But just this evening, I just came from testing six people at once, so I feel like we are now underway. And I'm, one of the great things about having the high set on the computer is that you get your result immediately when you finish, which is a big, very helpful to people who have a lot of anxiety about taking that test, so we're pretty excited about that. And lastly, we are, it's not too early to start thinking about the fall in terms of classes, so if anybody has any ideas of classes to run, I'd love to know. I think that's it? Any questions?
Next is Brooklyn Coordinator's Report, Mrs. Toni Ramos.
Good evening. Hi, Ed, let's see. So my report that you have is we're now going to be in the past tense as opposed to the future, since we're a week out. Some of the things I talked about were about to happen, have since happened, so I can report on them. Now I can say that in our last two curriculum instruction and assessment team meetings, the teachers on that committee analyzed data from a needs assessment by school and separated it into several categories. We're looking at different kinds of professional development, rate book and standards reporting, creating and adapting assessments and rubrics, the use of Atlas, proficiency-based instruction, differentiation, engagement case studies, and they've worked in groups of two and three over the last two meetings to identify the urgency around that professional development, the target audience, and the best times to provide those sessions. So we are going to continue this process, we kind of honed in on different times of the year. Just today, we just came out of a meeting talking about when we could work with certain groups to help them the most in moving towards a proficiency-based educational system. And this will accommodate in a two-year professional development plan for the Elsworth School District, so we will have that by the end of school year, we'll be able to share our plans for the coming year with the teachers before they leave for the summer, so they can know when they'll be having support in place. The K three literacy pilot, representatives from Apple and from the Department of Education presented a two-hour workshop this Friday, this past Friday, for K through three teachers to teach them how to use e-Spark. It's an iPad platform that tailors students' lessons in alignment with the N W E A assessments that they've recently taken. It's a powerful teaching tool, the kids are going to be able to be directed to different educational apps, so that it can be tailored to their interests and to their educational needs. And that'll be part of our literacy pilot, as we have become part of this. And finally, as you've heard from Mr. Newitt, our children are all very excited about taking the main educational assessment. This is going to be happening for the next two weeks, I've seen them jumping up and down the halls. The Elsworth School Department E S E A report card is now posted on the district website. This is data from the previous year. There's now two sites, one is a link to what they call the M A A R S website, a long acronym, M A A R S, and one of those A's is assessment, but the rest I'm not completely clear on. And you can see through interactive reports how different subgroups are performing in Elsworth, and you can also compare their performance to that of other schools. We have that link in the elsworthschools.org website. If you go to our district, underneath that is curriculum, and underneath the curriculum page is a reporting tab, and it'll take you directly to the link, and you can find out some different kinds of information. And you can find out some different kinds of information, depending on your students' particular grade, you'll be able to look at that public site if you're interested in that information. Last year, the students took the MEA for the first time. So these were some general results that I'm going to give you that we'll be using as a baseline to compare this year's testing results. We couldn't compare the results I'm about to give you to anything because the test changed from the previous year. Overall, in ELA, English Language Arts, 54.1% of the state students were at or above state expectations, and 56.5% of EHS students made this mark, and 54.02% of students at EEMS made that mark. Overall in math, 38.3% of main students in grades 3 through 8 were at or above the state expectations. 26% of EHS students performed this level, and 49.14% of students at EEMS performed at that level. We're hoping to support those scores now with reviewing new math resources this spring throughout the district. And we hope to see gains as well as a result of implementing a free algebra course to help students prepare better for high school math. In grades 3 through 8, all but one grade performed 10 or more points higher than the state average of students testing at or above expectations in math. And each grade in the middle school is seven to 15 points above the state average in ELA. And in the lower grades, we're also hoping to see gains this year as a result of the recently implemented phonics spelling curriculum and from wide teaching of high-impact differentiation strategies that teachers have been working on through the proficiency-based education law. And again, you can find any kind of information you're looking for through our link on our website if you are interested in more details. Do you have any other questions? There's many more interesting people here, so I am going to defer because my stuff is boring.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, our superintendent's report.
And I noticed we also have a young group waiting to present as well, so my report will be somewhat brief. But I was pleased to hear Mrs. Sargent mention next fall, it's not too early, said evening, for next fall. Because this is the time of year when we start to get two questions. One is, what's the last day of school? And believe it or not, the next one is, when does school start next year? I can give you a final answer pending the use of additional snow days this year. Final day for students, K-11, will be Monday, June 19th. We've used five storm, well, four storm days and one day where there was a manhunt taking place in the city. So we'd use five school closure days, we have to extend a couple of days past the end of what was on the calendar. So Monday, June 19th for students, and Tuesday, June 20th for staff. With regard to proposed calendar for next school year, that is still in development and we'll be bringing forth to the board a proposal at the April meeting. We have shared the calendar with our staff and gotten a great deal of feedback. And we're also working closely with the other sending schools who send to student states, HCTC, to ensure that we're in compliance with the state law with regard to school calendars. I can tell you that my most likely proposal is going to include a start date that is after Labor Day. And I think that's something that our staff is very interested in. With that being said, school construction application, if you remember a couple of months ago, the board had authorized administration to put together an application for a major capital improvement program with the Department of Education for Hancock County Technical Center. That application includes information on the long-range use of facility projections, the educational program and the extent to which the facility supports or presents limitations for our programming, tenure enrollment study, facilities and maintenance plans, and any professional facility studies, if they're available, and we do have one from back in 2011, '12 that was done, that will accompany this application. Completed application will be reviewed with the Facilities and Transportation Committee over the next couple of weeks, and we'll be bringing it to you at your April 11th meeting for approval. And the application needs to be submitted to the department event by Friday, April 14th. We'll be ready to go, we're excited about that. Looking forward to the prospect of replacing our HCTC with a brand-new facility. We have a number of new staff coming in for the spring. At EEMS, we have a varsity baseball coach will be Dan Lindsay. Junior varsity baseball coach will be Matt Downs. And on track and field, we will have co-coaches at EEMS. Paul Locke and Darren Richardson will share the head job. And our assistant coaches will be Darcy Dyer and Heather Coulson. Final thing I would like to share, and it's really consistent with what we've seen tonight, we've seen so many students in here tonight from all of our schools sharing with you the successes that they have had in their academic pursuits, their co- and extracurricular pursuits. I'd like to share communication with the board and our community about a recent email that I received, and I think, Mr. McCosian, you received it as well, from my colleague down on Mount Desert Island, a superintendent named Mark Gaus. He's new to the area, he's worked in other parts of the state for over 30 years. And just read part of his email. "It's a good afternoon, Dan. This past Friday, I was driving to Augusta to attend the state championship boys' basketball game between MDI and Wells. As I was traveling through Ellsworth, past Ellsworth High School, the sign on the marquee caught my eye. It said, 'Good luck, MDI.' I was both pleased and moved. Frankly, in my 34 years in the field of public education as a teacher, coach, athletic administrator, assistant principal, principal, and superintendent of schools, this is the most, one of the most genuine and positive examples of sportsmanship I have had the privilege of witnessing. You can and should be very proud of your students, staff, and community as this truly reflects the highest ideals of camaraderie spirit and regional support one could display." And my commendations go to the people at Ellsworth High School who made that happen. Just to follow up, I think it's an example of the types of behaviors and actions that we promote, support, and appreciate in our schools and in our community. When you combine this message that we received from Superintendent Gaus with the success we're seeing, and I don't have to elaborate on it, we saw a lot of it here tonight, students academically and in co-curricular activities. We have much to be proud of in the city of Ellsworth and in our schools because there are a lot of great things happening. I appreciate you letting me share that with you. And that concludes my report, unless you have any questions.
Thank you, ma'am, thanks for sending that letter. We're up to committee reports.
Let me start. The policy committee met last Monday. We had a number of proposed new policies, and we reviewed many, many other policies that just needed to be reviewed and have amendments, and we will go over those.
I'll report on the personnel committees, which consists of myself and Brenda Thomas, who is away right now. But we've been meeting, we've conducted a series of meetings with two associations to negotiate new contracts, one was the EDTEX and one was the Teachers. With the EDTEX, we've reached a tentative agreement and were waiting for the members to vote to ratify it. With the Teachers, we reached a tentative agreement, and that was brought to the Teachers and they voted to ratify it. So the board will be voting on that agreement a little bit later this evening.
If I may, there was one other committee that did meet, Facilities and Transportation Committee, did have a meeting with City Manager Cole, a local engineer, and Public Works Director, Mr. Wolson. And we'll be taking up an issue later in the agenda with regard to a proposed construction project that will be taking place over the summer and early fall.
That's it for committee reports, I believe. Next up is old business.
If I may make a suggestion, as we have some eager young students here who are ready to present, I would ask if the board would consider amending the agenda to allow the student presentation to take place ahead of old business. If you're going to do that, we simply need a motion and a second to vote to do that.
I move that we amend the agenda to allow a student presentation to take precedent.
Discussion? All in favor? All right, well. Dr., you're up.
So the presentation tonight is, was today, these children stayed after school with me and they have developed, written, and have practiced giving a presentation on SOS. So without any further, they'll introduce themselves and they'll talk you through it.
Hello, my name is Shanti.
My name is Shanti Agnew.
My name is Emily King and I'm in Miss Tats class.
I'm in the radio and I'm in the speeches class.
Before we start talking about SOS, we'll have to talk about lunch bunches. Lunch bunches are, lunch bunches are in groups of kids, one of them is a girl and a boy. Also, boys groups have odd numbers and the girls have even numbers. Like, boys could be in group one and there would be group two for girls. Lunch bunch takes place in the conference room, Miss PR. We meet up during our real election.
I'm going to be talking about what we do in lunch bunch. So we talk about what has been happening in the year, when there is rent issues, outside school activities, and classroom activities.
Lunch bunch suggests things like, last year someone suggested that we should have extra recess. The only time to do that is in the morning, and it gives you more time to eat breakfast. Also, five years ago, someone suggested that we have SOS, Service of Students. Mrs. PR says lunch bunch is one of her favorite lunch bunches.
Did you have questions after?
I'm going to be in another new scholars class, I'm in kindergarten, my name is Ms. Collins. This is a presentation on SOS, that stands for Service of Students. It was created five years ago. The first thing we learned, one to tell you about is us helping kindergarteners. We have sent, we have run around and we have found a teacher, maybe the support. SOS students help kindergarteners tackle issues and get to their classrooms. Some SOS students listen to while kindergarteners do the school.
One of the other things we do is help the libraries bring books back to the library. And we, they are extremely helpful by putting books in the classroom. They are learning how to organize the books so they get them away perfectly. I love their, the last job we did, we were telling them about the campaign, SOS, the campaign of open notes and pick up trash. They also help us take books.
Hi, buddy, this is my breaking out of Mrs. Carter's class.
Hi, my name is Gage, I'm in kindergarten. These are some quotes from teachers. SOS has been a huge help assisting my students to get unpacked. It's also been a pleasure to have SOS helper read one of my students' thesis book. SOS is always someone I can count on to walk a student somewhere if needed or to just need an extra hand. This quote is by Mrs. Thompson.
SOS is very helpful at the front office, they deliver many items for students that have been dropped off and help parents in lots of different ways. This quote is by Mrs. Cox.
When Mrs. Walsh found out that SOS students were available to help, she was so excited. This quote was by Mrs. PR.
SOS is a way of helping kids and teachers all throughout the school. There are six different ways to help, but we are talking about three. Three we are talking about are first and second grade, art room and office. For the first and second grade, we teach kids about walkers and tiny shoes.
Now for art, we help get materials ready for other classes, we also organize materials and sharpen classes. And for office, we usually pass out stuff, do announcements, hang out with friends, and play games in lots of fun. We love doing SOS and it's really fun to do at a middle level. Are there any questions?
You guys did a great job, thank you for coming.
Great job, as you can see, we have two different SOS sashes. We began with the beautiful maroon and the letters SOS that was made by Mrs. Haskell, but those we needed more, so last year Sunshine Bear made us these. So we are very proud of them, too, they did a great job.
Thank you very much. It's going to be hard to top that. Move on to old business.
Old business, if you remember at the last meeting, what had been on the agenda was the appointment of a parent to serve on the Ellsworth School Department Drop-Out Prevention Committee. And what we opted to do was to table that until this evening and see if we could find any parents who expressed an interest in wanting to serve. It had been on, I believe, 97.7 radio, I believe Mr. Clark put a feeler out on the school's Facebook page, and to my knowledge, we did not have any parents come forth. However, my recommendation for the board would be that you vote to authorize the drop-out prevention committee when it first convenes to take your responsibility and appoint a parent to that committee.
Okay, so we need a motion modifying the one that's on our agenda.
Motion would take the form of authorize the drop-out prevention committee to appoint a parent to serve on that committee.
I make a motion to authorize the ESD drop-out prevention committee to appoint a parent for the committee. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right, new business. We just had our student-staff presentation. So that is completed, and then the next item is first read of policies.
Okay, so as I mentioned, we had a number of policies to review last Monday. And we'll start with the new policies. The first was communicable and infectious diseases. We currently don't have one of these policies in place. There was conversation about, um, who lost my notes here. Type in any time, join in.
I think we were talking about some wording as to what was included in the definition as far as having to be released by doctors.
I'm out of order, if I have to. Give me just a minute, I have these all backwards. Okay, yes, that's right. So we were wondering if we need to have a definition as to what a communicable disease is because as the wording is now, the building principals shall be notified of all communicable diseases. However, communicable diseases include colds, flus, anything that can be passed from one person to another. And also, as written, it stated that students needed to have a note from the doctor to come back to school after a communicable disease. So we're thinking that we need to define exactly which communicable diseases we're talking about. We also, a new policy would be in immunization policy, that's JLCB. There was some discussion as to whether or not we should add that superintendent has 10 days, after 10 days, the superintendent needs to make arrangements to meet the educational needs of students. And also, to add some language about how long students need to be excluded after the risk of infection has passed. What's the next one? KLGA. The only thing with KLGA, which is relations with school resource officers and law enforcement authorities, was to spell out SRO for school resource officer somewhere in the title. And there wasn't any discussion, really no issues for JRA as written. And that was it for new policies. Children, are you going to add anything? I did my notes, I did all the other policies first, so, tell me. Okay, the review of existing policies. ACAA is harassment and sexual harassment of students. We added the sentence, "The term sexual orientation under state law means a person's actual or perceived heterosexuality, bisexuality, homosexuality, or gender identity for expression." That was the only new item in that policy. For JICK, we added the bullying policy as another policy. For J I C K, we added the bullying policy as another policy that harassment may be addressed. It's pretty minor. We also added the affirmative action officer as someone who will investigate the complaints of harassment. For B B A V, the Board Self-Evaluation, we just changed the evaluation date from December to July. I H B A, the Individualized Education Programs, that was just a review of a date review. I H B A A, again, is just updated references, no change. I H B A A R, we changed, there's a change in chapter one oh one. The legal references added. It's the last paragraph on page two. And basically, what it states is that we have thirty days. No, that we will follow, when a child comes to us with an existing I E P, we will follow that I E P until we conduct our own evaluation if that's necessary. I H B A C, the third paragraph new down is new. And that's just due to a change in the rule. And it states that the school unit shall provide child find during the first thirty days of the school year or during the first thirty days of enrollment for transferred children in addition to other child find activities provided by the school unit. J B A, which is compulsory attendance. Paragraph D is new. And that just states a person enrolled in online learning program or course unless the person is enrolled in a virtual public charter school as defined in twenty dash A M R S A. And basically, that just means that a child does not need to be in school if that is the case. For J L F. This is reporting child abuse and neglect. There was a paragraph added under training. It states any school unit employee who is required to make a report shall at least once every four years complete mandated training approved by D H H S. There was some discussion about whether or not once every four years is enough. And we wanted input from the rest of the board as to whether or not it should be every two years or once every four years. Would we talk about it at the workshop? The only change for J K A A, use of physical restraint and seclusion, was page two. We just added school resource officers in addition to law enforcement officers since we now have a school resource officer. And for J K F, disciplinary removal of students with disabilities, it was just a review date. Did I get them off?
Yep.
A busy policy meeting.
So we have a recommended motion.
I'll take these all together. You have an option. You can take the first read of policies all together or you can do them individually. If there are questions on any from other board members, you might want to take them individually. If the questions that Mr. Kenny mentioned are ones that the policy committee can take up during their next policy committee meeting, then you can take them on mass.
Want to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the first read of the following policies as recommended by the policy committee.
As presented.
As presented.
I would second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Next up, discussion and consideration of administrative contracts.
Yes, I believe you included this in your packet of recommendations that I discussed with the personnel committee for administrative contracts for the seventeen eighteen school year. What I'm recommending is for each administrator, based upon evaluation of their performance, two and a half percent increase in salary for the seventeen eighteen year and extension of their contract as noted in the document that I provided to you. And you notice on our business manager, Carolyn Heller, because of an increase in services required by the Hancock-Lemoine contract, we do amend the addendum by seven hundred and fifty dollars.
I make a motion to approve the amendments of the following administrative contracts in accord with the terms and conditions of employment as recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Next up is discussion of proposed city storm drain maintenance. I can talk about that. So I'm on the Facilities and Transportation Committee. And we, as we mentioned earlier, we met with David Cole from the city as well as an engineer and several other members from the city, a property, adjacent property owner. Talk about storm drain maintenance. Basically, you get water that comes, flows down through a storm drain next to the new road, I believe. And it comes out into the Dunkin' Donuts parking lot. And then connects with some other storm drains. And there's places where, and then there's also an open ditch where one storm drain empties over the ditch and then at the other end of the ditch is another storm drain. So there's... What we've got there now is not adequate to contain all the water when there's a heavy rain and there's lots of water rushing through these storm drains and on the surface. And some of you may have noticed that the water around one end of Dunkin' Donuts by the loading dock, or not Dunkin' Donuts, by the loading dock of the Mill Mall can get pretty high. And so we're trying to address this issue at the same time that we're addressing, at the same time the road construction is happening because we can get some state money to do this now. But if we don't do it now, that will not be available.
And with future development that's projected for the area, it's important that this infrastructure project be completed. And the opportunity to get state money for a portion of the project, and that's a question we could ask at City Hall. City Manager Cole, City Council are hoping that the school department will be on board with moving forward. One of the concerns that we had was it would be an impact to middle school baseball field. Did have a conversation with Mr. Newitt that we can find a way to comply. There was a possibility for that portion of the project to be completed during the summer months, which will be less impact. But if it has to be in the fall, we can make arrangements to have our practices held at a different location.
Basically, if we approve this, the work would start sometime around the beginning of summer, maybe, and then continue through the fall. And it's gonna entail putting a new, doing some connections and putting some new storm drains underneath where the current, below the track, the practice baseball field.
Well, triple start, intersection of Route one A, and it's gonna be the new entrance to the school. All the way across through the Dunkin' Donuts parking lot, behind the Mill Mall, along Pond Avenue, and across our baseball field.
Yeah.
And what the city was looking for, the board to do, was to express support for the project. So your vote tonight would be to express support for the project. And Facilities Transportation Committee had asked me to do was to find out what the impact would be on the schools, and we're prepared to address that.
Soccer practices might have to be a very good thing for some of the... And we don't know all the exact impact, but we're gonna, the project manager and everyone's gonna try to, to the extent possible, minimize the disruption to our sports practices.
Where does this water ultimately end up?
Leninsley.
Okay. So we're basically working on getting it from where it goes across...
It's gonna get there anyway, whether we help it or not.
The water already goes there. But the issue is that the development that's taking place and potential future development, the existing infrastructure is not sufficient to handle the capacity of water. This will address that issue and upgrade everything from the one A location all the way to the other end of the system.
Why I ask is because this is a citywide issue, water. And my concern was that we were gonna put a lot of effort and disruption into something that might not still go anywhere if it were not, you know, that's why I was asking, where's the ultimate end to this?
If you see a little stream right by our back entrance. I think ultimately, that's where all of these pipes connect, or take from the...
That's correct.
And under the road, down into one of the, out of the, Sewell Park, across the street from the back of the school. So we've got a recommended motion.
I make a motion that we express support for the proposed city storm drain maintenance project as proposed.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? No, that's great. Tell us about a question, not a discussion. So you're all good.
Okay.
Next up is budget update.
Yes, I believe in your packet you received a listing of the initial budget draft for the general fund, which includes our cost centers of regular instruction, special instruction, C T E, other instructions, student staff services, system admin, school administration, facilities, transportation, debt service, and other. As you can see from that document, the current draft of the budget comes to twenty-one million, one hundred eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars and forty-eight cents, which would represent a five point zero four percent increase. Now, the thing to know about those numbers, and hey, I can go through them in a little bit in more detail here in a moment, is that there is one piece that we do not have yet. We're still trying to finalize some of the work that needs to be done at Hancock County Technical Center to convert the existing academic classroom into a laboratory for the biomedical program. We had engineers, local engineers, meet with Kenny Shay, Russ Gray, and Mrs. Bowles this past Friday to take a look at the site and come up with their final determinations of what is going to be necessary. We expect to have those numbers in the next couple of weeks. That's the only thing that is not reflected in here. With regard to this draft, it's compared with the two thousand sixteen seventeen budget, as you can see. It does include all new programming and staffing requests that were discussed at last week's workshop. Adult education is not included yet because it's not finalized. And I'm not prepared to take a look at what the impact is going to be locally because final revenue figures to support the budget are not yet available. You've heard Mr. Clifford and Mrs. Bowles speak about their recruiting efforts. With Mr. Clifford's open house taking place next week, we hope to have more firm numbers with regard to the number of tuition students. And you heard Mrs. Bowles talk about the deadline for applications. That's not until March thirty-first. It makes more sense to take a look at the local piece when we have more firm numbers there. With that being said, one document that you didn't get in your packet is right here. And I can run through these very quickly for you so you can have an understanding of where the increases come in each of the different cost centers. If you look under regular instruction, you'll see a six point eight percent increase as proposed at this point in time for initial draft. What's included in there is a full-time math interventionist teacher position to address math needs with students, and that's based upon data that we've received from assessments. The increase to support needs both at the high school, vocational school, and bridge program that are greater than we anticipated of halftime math teacher, halftime E L A teacher at Elsworth High School. In looking at projected enrollment for foreign language, increasing the current halftime foreign language teacher to full-time. And to address the caseload of five oh four eligible students, section five oh four, the addition of one full-time teacher. That makes up the bulk of that increase in regular education. Those positions along with health insurance, which we have budgeted at twelve percent, not knowing the ultimate increase. Under special instruction, it's an increase of two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, or just under seven percent. What we're looking at there is a halftime administrative assistant to work with the state agency client population. Three new ed tech three positions based upon student needs. And we have a projected increase in out-of-district tuition that we have to pay for students who we're unable to program for here in our district. And that accounts for that. When you look at career and technical education, you see four hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase, or almost thirty-five percent. What's included in there for this current draft, it's important to hear this because it talks about what it is we're trying to accomplish. What we have is a full-time academics teacher to replace a full-time academics ed tech. We moved in the direction of the ed tech services last year. They were not as successful as we would have liked, so we're moving back to a teacher position this year. We're looking to increase the biomedical program from halftime to full-time and relocate it to Hancock County Technical Center instead of Elsworth High School. And again, that's going to be contingent upon the number of students that we have sign up for the course. Based upon a slight uptick in the number of students for the carpentry program, we're looking to increase the current halftime carpentry program to full-time. Again, that's contingent upon enrollment of students. Because of requirements in state law and regulations with regard to early childhood programs, we no longer can count our high school students as part of the ratio for students to staff. So we're going to need to add a full-time ed tech three for the early childhood program. And then some more significant pieces would be in the roof replacement at H C T C. We currently have a hundred thousand dollars in there for that project. There is a possibility that that project may be able to be postponed for a number of years. And we may be able to get putting money into reserve rather than funding the entire hundred thousand dollars in this budget. There'll be more to come on that over the next few weeks. We're looking at costs, as I mentioned before, for retrofitting the current academics classroom into a biomedical lab. We'll have those costs as well. And in order to accommodate the biomedical program in the former academics classroom, we're doing some work to retrofit the current early childhood space to accommodate the academics classroom. So that's why you see such a large projected increase at H C T C. With regard to other instruction, which is your co-curricular programming, you're looking at a one point five percent increase. That typically is accounted for in an increase in our wages. And we're also looking at having the football program come under Elsworth School Department domain rather than the volunteers who've done such a great job over the years. With regard to student and staff services, and this includes your guidance, library, curriculum, assessment, instructional technology, you're seeing a six point nine seven percent increase, or a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. What makes up the bulk of that is we're looking at, based upon needs, hiring full-time instructional technology staff to address the number of help tickets that are being generated toward our school system, students and staff. And looking to add a halftime instructional coach. The other half, as we've talked about before, is funded through Title one A. Halftime instructional coach that will be able to work with our staff members at the high school. And again, that is something that will be very helpful to us as we move forward with our transition efficiency-based instructional model. System administration, you're seeing a forty-seven thousand dollar increase, or nine percent. What that is, is I mentioned earlier, a halftime administrative assistant under special ed to work with state agency clients. We have a number of other needs that we have within the school system around reporting to N E O, which is where we do our student, excuse me, our staff enrollment for the essential programs and services model. In terms of free and reduced lunch applications, in terms of other administrative assistant functions that we're currently having trouble struggling to get completed. We'll add another halftime position to that to make a full-time position so we can get a qualified candidate. And we've looked at a calendar of tasks that can take place throughout the school year that will couple with the state agency client function to make that a good full-time position. So that makes up the bulk of the increase in system administration. The other piece is about ten thousand dollars for a software and hardware update for our informational system. Under school administration, I'm looking at wages and benefits. And I emphasize benefits because right now we're projecting a four percent increase on health insurance. And the final piece would be in transportation. We have a small increase, and what it shows is that we're becoming a little more efficient. That includes two replacement school buses and the payments on those. So with regard to the budget, that's what the draft looks like at this point in time. There will be more to come on that. And one of the things that we'll be doing at our next leadership team meeting on Wednesday is taking a look at where are the priorities in the event that we need to make reductions... where are the priorities in the event that we need to make reductions to the requests that are here. And as you know, last year, the budget that had a two percent increase or three percent increase could have resulted in an eight or nine percent increase locally. And that's certainly something that we're not looking to do this year. We are looking to fund education adequately and appropriately. And we'll continue to give you updates as the budget moves forward with our administrators and with our finance. And I know that was a lot of information in very short time. Are there any questions?
Danny, I have a question about the Section five oh four teacher. Would that be placed at the high school?
We envision it being housed at the high school. That's where the majority of the students are. But in the event that we need to have services over here, or case management over here at the middle school, we already do have some staff who are going back to the middle school, so that would not be a stretch.
Any other questions? Numbers, next item is negotiations update and possible executive session.
I'm not sure that there is a need for an executive session this evening. And certainly, the next item on the agenda is for you to take up a vote to ratify the agreement with teachers, and you've all had an opportunity to see the agreement with the ed techs. If you don't need to do that, let's move on to the next item.
Okay. Next item is consideration of ratification of negotiated agreement between the Ellsworth School Board and the Ellsworth Education Association. Got a recommended motion?
I recommend that we ratify the contract that has been negotiated by our representatives and the representatives of the Ellsworth Teachers Association.
Any discussion?
I would just say, great job on both sides of the table to our representatives, as well as the teaching staff representatives. Wonderful job.
And I would like to add that I really appreciate the effort that was made by the teachers to come to the table and it was very productive and very, can't speak highly enough how positive the whole experience was. So thank you both, both of the representatives who happened to be here tonight. And Mrs. Johnson is not here, but thank you so much. And with that,
Can I second that?
All in favor? So now we are up to calendar and announcements. Meeting schedule. We've got a, do you have policy committee meeting schedules?
We are planning on having a scheduled meeting, which is Monday and every month.
Okay. We've got a school board workshop scheduled for March twenty-eighth at the Ellsworth School Department Conference Room at six P M. And our next school board meeting will be Tuesday, April eleventh, at City Hall Council Chambers at six thirty P M, unless it's a snow day, that day, we have to schedule it.
We don't want to... The other meeting that I would add is Facilities and Transportation. I'm still trying to find a time for to, you and I, to meet with City Manager Cole and Larry Wilson, because the Route 1A project is going to start up soon. And there were some other developments that they wanted to talk to us about. And I will let you know when to have.
So, last item we did is German.
I make a motion to adjourn the board meeting.
Any discussion? All in favor?